Welcome, everyone. I think I'm going to call the meeting to order. We'll start with roll call. Katie, would you like to begin roll call for the school board?
Cameron Cruz-Gerdia.
Here.
Kathleen Plunkett.
Here.
Eric Croft. Betty Davis. Pat Higgins. Tamara Gossie-Easman. Alisa Smelling.
Here.
And with the Assembly, Amanda.
Chair Trainey.
Here.
Vice Chair Gray Jackson.
Here.
Assemblymember Starr. Excused. Assemblymember Dubowski will be arriving shortly. Assemblymember Hall.
Here.
Assemblymember Steele.
Here.
Assemblymember Flynn is excused. Assemblymember Honeman excused. Assemblymember Peterson.
Present.
Assemblymember Evans.
Here.
Assemblymember Johnson.
Here.
Thank you. Let's now have the flag salute. Lisa, would you like to lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'd like to enter the motion to, let's see, we have minutes. Do we need to approve the minutes? Yes, we need the motion to approve the minutes from March 13th.
Move approval.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Minutes. No motion passes. And we have an agenda. Can I entertain a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. We have an agenda. It's approved. We'll move on to our three items of business today. We're going to be having three presentations. One on the summer construction update, second is on vandalism, and third, the ASD people mover project update. These three items were selected because the theme of this meeting, we felt like, was really talking about collaboration and how the school, district, and municipality are collaborating in really positive ways. And so these are three examples of that. And we hope to have some good discussion as a result of these presentations. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Grab.
Thank you, everyone. So as you know, this is one of our three seasons that we have. Winter, construction. I don't know what the third is, I guess, winter. And so what we thought we would do is give you an update on some of the different projects that we have going on in the district and the municipality. So Mike Abbott, our COO, and Mike Nero, our Facilities Director, are going to give you kind of an overview of all the different things that we have going on. And a lot of this is in part of the support that we receive from the voters in the Assembly with our bonds. So some of those will be highlighted, as well as past projects that are being finished up. So a lot of things happen in our schools. Go ahead, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. President, members. My name's Mike Abbott. I'm the Chief Operating Officer for the school district. I'm here today to tell you about a pretty busy construction schedule that has already begun. School's been out for a couple of weeks now, and we have construction operations mowed up on a number of sites already. And that work's going to even ramp up even further before the summer's over. As the superintendent mentioned, we're able to move forward like this because we've been the beneficiary, primarily, of voter-approved bonds for the last four and a half or five years in a row. That's a pretty good run for us. Those of you that recall know that typically, support for school bonds kind of comes in and out and for a variety of reasons, in part because of strong Assembly support. We've been able to be successful for the last five years now. And as a result, we have a consistent, robust, planned construction activity. We're not sort of bouncing around as we've been forced to do in different periods in the past. So we're going to tell you today about some projects that are finishing up and some other projects that are going to be getting started. And this is all possible because, as I said, we've had consistent support from the municipality and ultimately, the voters for the last several years. So first, I want to introduce Mike Nero. I know probably most of you on the Assembly don't know Mike. Mike joined the school district in December after a long, successful career in the Air Force. He was involved in project management and the civil engineering teams out at Jay Bear for many years. He retired, and he's joined the school district late 2014. And he took over our capital projects team. And that's the group he's leading, and that's a little bit of the work he's going to start describing to you now. So, Mike, it's all yours.
Thanks for your introduction. Good morning, Mr. Chair, Assemblymembers, Mr. President, Vice, School Board Members, and the Superintendent. Thank you for the opportunity to go over some of the work we're starting this summer and some of our construction program activities. I am very excited to be here as part of the school district. I think it's great joining, left the professional staff, and I'm joining professional staff. And we just can't, just to give you an idea of scope of work for these summer projects, right now, we're monitoring, managing 47 design projects, roughly $66 million. Eighty-nine, roughly eighty-nine construction projects in the realm of $173 million. So it just never ceases to amaze me, the level of effort and the workload and the professional dedication that the staff continues to make good things happen across the district. So with that said, let me try to point this thing in the right direction. All right, quick overview. We'll be talking about the capital projects, the updates at Girdwood, updating at Service High School, and the West and Romey CTE projects. And then we'll roll into some of the other construction activities that are happening across the district. And I would like to, you know, offer up, you guys are, I would be excited and enthusiastic to take any of you out, to call us and schedule an appointment, to walk out there on the construction sites. It's just amazing what we're doing for the kids in the district. So as far as Girdwood's concerned, photos are worth a million words. So here's an exterior look at the front of the school there. I don't know how the kids would concentrate on school, myself, being an avid snowboarder, sitting in class and looking outside the window up on the ski resort would be a huge distraction for me. But the school is beautiful. The relationship between, this is a walkthrough, the kids are very involved. The staff is very updated on a routine basis. And this is actually Waterson's superintendent with our project manager Calvin, walking the kids through the construction and letting them, they're very excited about the things going on at Girdwood. Another photo of the two-story addition that we put on Girdwood. And this is the picture standing on the running track, so that's the running track on the upper level, and looking down into the gym. And this is just looking down the business corridor in that section. So we have, you know, the footprint here of Girdwood, complete renovation of the school. Section A is the two-story addition, and B and C. So the start date was May 2014. It's around 75% complete. The ribbon cutting is scheduled for August 18th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. So I encourage you, if you can make it there, to attend. It's encouraged that you bring a side dish. So I think you're doing a little heavy hors d'oeuvres with the ribbon cutting. So as far as scheduled performance, we're on schedule, we're on budget. The remaining work of the project is NEA Wing, the two-story building. There'll be installing casework, kitchen equipment, some gym equipment, and flooring for the elevated running track. In the B Wing, it'll just be 1% for art, partial demolition and final renovation in that area, and then the final site cleanup, and they'll roll out of there. Service, you're looking into the student cafeteria area. This is the corridor that connects the school to the gym area. I mean, this is a photo of the library as of 1971. And this is the complete renovation of the library, which is just beautiful. Service High School, the scope of the project was to renovate buildings, I think everybody has a clue about, B, C, portions of A, and sections E, F. So that started in 2013. Completion dates will be August 15th for those sections, except for the Grant Fraser Memorial Auditorium, which we just recently awarded and added to that contract. So that'll be a complete gut of the existing auditorium and just a refurbishment, that whole auditorium. And that is in the section B area down here in this corner, as you want to be to D.
Assemblymember Dr. Dus.
I have a question that's been being asked for a long time as far as service. The color scheme used to be green and yellow, and it's still barely on hand. And now we've got the blues. And I mean, is that all going to be coordinated at some point so it doesn't look half like East High and half like other things and not having sort of a service then?
You don't like to collect.
You know, I'm a collective person.
But it matches everybody's outfit. I would say when we go into the design stage, that, you know, those community principal, staff, kids, you know, they get their time and input in that.
The school's making those decisions. So those aren't being made here. Those, the choices on, especially colors, are being made in the schools.
So will there be at some point of an overall, I mean, does it?
If the school wants it, the school picked. So we're, the short answer is, it'll be whatever the school has decided.
Was it tied in the theme? As in, go over my digital.
Well, actually, it's not my district, so it's all right.
So we're projecting the Grant Fraser Auditorium Memorial, Memorial Auditorium to be completed December 15th. As far as the rest of the school, Building C is 100% complete. The rest of the buildings are 78% complete. And they did start on the auditorium as far as starting the demo, so there's a little percent complete. Schedule and budget, we're on schedule, on budget. Remaining work is the kitchen, loading dock, and exterior work to be completed this summer. And again, the auditorium will be completed this summer. So we should be wrapping it up in Service High School this summer. Here's a photo of the exterior, the West CTE project, two-story addition to that school. Another view with the exterior shelf starting to be put on the building. Interior view. This is the floor plan layout, Level 1. This will be a big, open corridor here, just a glass stairwell. 1% art will be hanging in this corridor, so it's going to be a very aesthetically pleasing corridor. Floor plan, two, secondary.
Assemblymember Hall.
Out of curiosity, and Mike, I doubt that you can answer this, but it's incredible building, but what's the curriculum that's going to be taught inside within that?
You're right. We can't answer that. But somebody can, but they're not here today. So we'll follow up with you and get to that information.
So the status, CTE, the scope at West was a totally teaching station. It started June 2014 and roughly 45% complete, and then projected to complete in December of this year. We are on schedule, on budget. There was a value engineering exercise and additional funds secured for this project. We did remaining work. It's complete exterior building envelope this summer. And that interior building finishes to be done in December to wrap the project up. This is the exterior look at the Romey Project, and it's on the back of the school. That's, you're looking right there inside into the Family Consumer Science Lab area. Again, big, beautiful windows on each of the labs. And this is the floor plan. So we did, the area you were looking at is in the back of the school. Three classroom teaching stations. These are the floor plans for the teaching stations down below. And this was also included, renovating a classroom here. So you can see, in this section up here, you can see how they're renovating the classroom up there. This project also started in June 14, and they are 70% complete, and they are projected to wrap it up in December as well. Again, on schedule, on budget, and remaining work is to wrap up the exterior shell, interior finishes, and just the doors, windows, hardware, painting, that kind of thing. Making great progress. And then we'll roll into just a few of our other projects on our scope through the summer construction season. Some of these will be completed this summer, and some of them will roll into a school season and be completed next summer, the bigger projects. So we look at Airport Heights. We're going to start that project and finish that project in August of '16. Renewal of classrooms. I won't go into reading each of these lines. We have Aurora Elementary School. We are projected to finish that project in July, prior to the school starting, and that is with the new gymnasium. Bay Shore Elementary School, doors and windows. August 15th is when we're projecting to finish that, so this summer. Beckett Middle School, we'll get a project to do a little construction yard adjacent to the facility. We're planning on finishing that up this summer. Central Middle School, we'll be getting lockers, again, finishing this summer. Chuggett High School, CTE, also renovation of two classrooms there. Creekside Park Elementary School, security system, new video surveillance, interior cameras and workstation. Diamond High School, we'll be getting heated sidewalks. We'll be finishing up this summer. Eagle River, component renewal project. We're in the process of working through that best value approach right now for construction. And we should be, we're anticipating to have that on the June 22nd agenda for the school board meeting. East High School Stadium, grandstand seating, fencing pathways, press box and scoreboard by September this year. Again, Huffman Elementary School, doors and windows, focusing on energy projects. We hope to get that finished this summer of '15 as well. Huffman Generator this summer. Kennedy Data Center, we'll be getting a new roof. Mount Milliamna Fire Alarm System. Mountain View Elementary School, big renewal project there. And we are currently working through that best value approach as well. So we should have some more development rather soon on Mountain View, but also expected to be on the June 22nd school board agenda. And that is a project that'll go through this summer, school season, and then next summer. Hachshu Middle School will be getting new lighting and security upgrades. Northwood Elementary School, doors and windows. Rabbit Creek Elementary School renewal, again, summer, school season, summer. And we are working through the best value selection currently. And we should be seeing this project on the 15th school board meeting. South High School Stadium, grand seating, sound mitigation, press box, fencing, and pathways. And we should be discussing that project this school board meeting on Monday or next school board meeting. Susitna Elementary School upgrades. Again, lots of mechanical, electrical, fire alarm, sprinkle, windows, doors. Another, you know, another opportunity for best value, complicated project through the summer, school season and summer. So we awarded that contract already, and that project actually came in under budget. So that's a good use of that project. I'm going to slideshow.
Actually, before we go to questions, let me just, we have a few people join us. And just for the record, Assemblymember, where are you? Oh, there, Dubowski, welcome. And School Board Member Eric Croft, let's read. School Board Member Pat Higgins. Any others join us? Okay, thanks. Assemblymember Drew Peterson, you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. President. There was some controversy over the stadium being built at South High, as evident. Is the design satisfied the neighborhood, or is there still some people?
The two members from South Angkor.
Defer to the Assemblymembers from the South.
Although, I'd rather defer to you.
I bet you would, yeah. So right now, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved the Site Plan Amendment in January or February of this year. Three neighboring homeowners appealed the planning and zoning decision to the Board of Adjustment. The Board of Adjustment will be meeting next week to hear and decide that case. Our plans on moving forward are contingent on getting an affirmation of the planning and zoning decision from the Board of Adjustment. So if the Board of Adjustment finds differently, then we will not be moving forward with the project. But we are anticipating a positive result from the Board of Adjustment and are moving forward so that we're ready in that event. The school board will have the opportunity to award the contract on Monday night, contingent on a successful outcome at the Board of Adjustment. So there is still some neighborhood opposition, I think is safe to say.
Okay, great, thanks.
Assemblymember Trainey?
Thank you. Mike, the next step after BOA is what, Superior Court?
Yes.
Because these people aren't going to quit.
Hope springs eternal, Mr. Chairman.
Whatever.
And so I would not anticipate that, even if there is, I believe the municipality has agreed to issue a building permit contingent on the Board of Adjustment, the outcome of the Board of Adjustment process. And at that point, it would be our plan to move forward.
Are you sending somebody to go to the BOA meeting, of course? Could you send an email to all of us and let us know their decision?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't think you'll lack for information on that.
Assemblymember Gray Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Change in subjects. I just want to say thank you for your presentation. I really enjoyed seeing the photos, because for me, it makes it real. You know, so it was really good.
Thank you. Those of you that will be at Airport Heights, Mountain View, and Rabbit Creek starting this summer, most of the school for the next year will be conducted in relocatables on those campuses. So those are major renewals that are now funded, and we're in the final processes of initiating, well, Airport Heights has begun, Rabbit Creek and Mountain View will begin in the next couple of weeks. And those are going to be very disrupted campuses for the '15, '16 school year. And principals and their school communities have adapted to that, much as Girdwood has been disrupted for the last 12 or 14 months. So if you want to see how a school operates in that kind of conditions, you should drop by Airport Heights, Rabbit Creek, or Mountain View this next year.
Assemblymember Hall, any question?
Yes. I'm kind of curious, you know, we got great projects coming on. But the fact that with this last election, we passed, I don't remember, 59 million? What was the bond, 59 million dollar bond package? And of course, that one, the city is, or the municipality is going to cover the full cost because there's no reimbursement from the state. And I was thrilled to see that bond pass. Is there a chance there will be some reimbursement?
The legislature, I mean, the Senate President's on record saying that the Anchorage 2015 School Bond would be eligible for debt reimbursement. The initial position from the administration, the governor's office, is that it would not. So I expect that to be a source of some discussion. It would not affect actual voter-paid debt until a year from now. So there'll be some time to resolve that.
Right.
So we're hopeful.
But I think the majority of the community went and voted with the understanding that they were probably going to pick up the floor vote for that. And where I'm kind of going is, you know, it appears we're going to have a little bit of time this morning. Not that we all don't love short meetings. But at this point in time, where is the school district in regards to your all-over capital and project improvement needs and how we are in regards to deferred maintenance? Because, you know, we're all starting to get that feeling, the longer that the legislature is in session, which seems to be going to run to next January when they start the new one. People are beginning to start having some angst and some real concerns. Because I can tell you that Jennifer and myself, as part of the Alaska Municipal League, we've got some communities in Alaska that are terrified right now about what the eventual fallout from all of this is going to be. So I'd like to kind of get some feel about where we are in regards to capital needs, where we are in our maintenance. Because if the legislature manages to cause some concern on the part of decisions of the State of Alaska, funding may become much more difficult in the future. Not only the fact that there may not be funding coming, we don't know exactly what, I'm to the point where I'm not asking what they're going to do for us. I'm asking what they're going to do to us now in regards to budget. But I think it's going to be very strategic on all of our parts to start thinking about long-term. And if the funding begins to dry up, what are we going to need to do? What's our strategy going to be? I'm assuming that we've got a fair amount of bonds that have been approved that are yet to be sold, and projects coming. So just kind of a brief overview of that, if possible, particularly the deferred maintenance or any major maintenance that you may have.
So I have School Board Member Plunkett and Croft in the queue. But before they go, would you like to respond to it?
I can maybe just add some. Our current six-year CIP anticipates about $55 million a year of bond, of new bonding per year for the next five years, which is essentially what we're paying off, which has been our pattern for the last five years. Only to ask for new authorization equal to what we're paying off in the prior year. That, obviously, we've had debt reimbursement in the past. So without that, we don't know, we're not as confident that the voters will support that as we were. It is not clear that the district can keep up with its deferred maintenance requirements with $55 million a year. So there is some concern that that will not be enough forever to address the district's long-term needs. That's what we have programmed for the short term. But I think there's some doubt as to whether that's going to be enough beyond the three, four-year timeline.
Mike, do you mind? And we also, you know, we have a great facility condition assessment program. And I recently got back from the Chief Operating Officer's get-together. And comparing us to other school districts, we do have a very good program in place for facility condition assessments. And during this latest review, you know, we're able to use that facility condition assessment to look at facility systems and take a look at systems that are beyond their useful life. And, you know, we're generating reports, and we're working with the contractor right now to enhance that. And our goal is in June, I'm sorry, in July and August timeframe, is to present that information exactly as you described it, on if we maintain status quo, what's going to happen to our facilities? You know, we have an FCI, Facility Conditionist Index. What happens if we stay on the course? What happens to our FCI? And what do we really need to improve our FCI? And then what happens if we don't get, you know, funding? So we're working diligently to do all that data-driven stuff and present that in a format that I think is going to meet your request in that way.
If I may, Mr. President, just, you know, kind of a follow-up on the thought. Because where I was going there is here for looking at 55 million a year for five years. We have to look at the budget cap that we operate under. And if, well, we know that maybe we can get reimbursement. we can get reimbursement this year, but we know in the future there will not be reimbursement for, I think it's a five-year sunset, then depending on whether we discover another Prudhoe Bay or not. But in, in that, if we were doing that, we got to see if it's even feasible or if it's even possible under the budget cap with picking up full payment, whether we even have the ability to tax to cover that type of bonding should it pass. So, I just think it's something we need to put under our caps and make sure we're giving some thought to, look into out.
Yeah, we, we are. I mean, I don't want to dismiss what you're saying. We are, we've had those conversations and really we keep coming back to focusing on the needs, you know, and I think those projects that we put forward in this last bond, they're all very needs-based. I was telling Mr. Steel, Tim Steel, that, you know, we scaled back, we went through several scenarios and versions, ended up where they're strictly needs-based projects that are out there. So, using the FCI that Mike talked about, taking a close look at what those needs are and being mindful of, like you said, there is a five-year moratorium on reimbursement. Those things aren't going to go away, though.
Let me get a few of you people in. Kathleen, you could rush next to some comments?
So, I'll make just a comment on the first one. The other thing that we have out there that, that can always be used for it, though, is that I, I need to get a handle on what the dollar amount is, is the capital fund balance account we have for operational efficiency, which is definitely something that could be used for some of those emergency-type replacement projects out there, Ernie, that I'm glad we have and have that available. The other thing I just wanted to comment on, when you were mentioning the different schools that had work going on, Wender Park also does, and it's, I know the next community council that meets there is going to have to do something a little, a little different because they're doing the rerouting of a new driveway and for buses and for parking. So, there's multiple schools in addition to those that are also under, under construction for any of those that may be going to those meetings.
Mr. Croft?
Excellent question. And we, we, in fact, President, President D and I were talking before the meeting in last week about do we want to add that to the agenda? So, I'm really glad you brought that up, a more general discussion of where do we go and how do we do it and how do we deal with that? And, and I'm going to, I think, use the Policy Committee to discuss that, what policy do we want to have for the next five years on it? I mean, just, it is the best capital process I've seen in government at any level. It is, has a six-year rolling plan, which the state had but never followed, and it has a better public process and a better use of metrics than, than any other. So, it, and I'm glad to see that it compares favorably with other schools, but it already so, and it has what no other capital process that I'm aware of has, which is a continual check with the public, right? So, we, we do it by, and you guys do too, going out to the public and asking them, and that's a great feedback loop to see how you're doing. And we have in the past had to restructure projects or move them or forget about them for a while, or sometimes rarely, but forget about them forever if the public just ain't invited. So, in all those aspects, it's, it's the best. And I, like you, was heartened by the vote this time. We tried to be really brutally honest and I put on the website, we don't know whether there's going to be reimbursement to make sure the public didn't, in fact, it looks like there might not be, and, and we're heartened by them voting anyway. So, we're going to be addressing just that. We've been doing it based on the actual needs of the district, and so we'll continue that conversation. I think you'll see us, or you'll see me urging that we introduce another measure, which is our debt per capita, or our debt per something, per assessed valuation, per something. So, because we've been living on 20 years ago, bonding before, and that, we, we may need to do that for a while. It's been a great selling point to the public, but it's meant our bonding per capita has gone down, down, down. And that is appropriate again, too. It's just, we're going to have a harsh discussion about can we continue to live on that and if so, for how much longer? But that six-year CIP with a public committee that, that plans it out and plans through it and helps us get feedback, I think is the reason you've seen some of the successes. So, if, if any Assembly Members want to come to that, you'd be more invited as I put it together and we'll have presentations on, on just that. Can we live on this? If not, what can we, what do we feel the impact of this is going to be? In some ways, we're in better shape, well, in better shape than a lot of the small rural areas, which are going to be hit hard. And that's what you'll, and you, I, I think the real rub will come, it's easy to some extent to say, for the legislature to say they're not going to do the debt reimbursement for a period of time. Whether they mean they're not going to build any schools or not in rural Alaska or anywhere is a big question. If they mean that, there's a lot of other players to say something about that. And after a while, if they're building rural schools and not helping with Urban, then Urban Alaska will have something to say. But thank you for the question. We are addressing it.
I have Assembly Member Steel, then Johnson, then Gray Jackson.
Yeah, I'm amazed at how much, how much work you're doing this year. And I presume that this workload has, has used up the unsold bonding capacity that you have from whenever, such that you're, you're down a little bit there. I'm happy to see the efficiencies, the expenditure on windows and doors and those things that will reduce operating costs. I'm a little, I'm a little concerned about the future. And I presume that, that you're, you're still carrying a significant level of maintenance in your budget as well. I think it was 20 million when I'm way back when. So, it's not, you're not without some funding in an emergency in that regard, so.
Certainly, the district has, you know, significant fund balance available in the, to address truly emergent situations. Our capital funding is essentially tracking our capital projects. So, whereas maybe up to about eight or 10 years ago, we did have some sort of interest and other earnings from old bonds that those have been spent down on capital projects. Now, we're, we're using the money as it comes in, if you will. So, there is not a residual amount left over from previous projects of any, of any real scale. So, we do have an active preventative and corrective maintenance program right now as the Muni does. Ours is approximately $20 million. It runs our in-house effort and a series of contracted projects as well.
That's, that's upwards of 100 buildings, 100 structures?
We, we have right at a little less than 100 structures, 7.7 million square feet replacement value of a little over $3 billion. Those are the numbers you guys have all heard us say a number of times. One of, if not the largest, public facility fleet in the state.
Assembly Member Johnson?
And that brings me to my question as far as, I bought, you know, the process that we have now is so much better than it was seven years ago. I put a lot of that emphasis on you. I think you've done a great job as far as developing the matrix. My concern is, or my question is, the way you've developed this matrix, it's been facility or building-based, so needs-based to the building. And I'm wondering if the School Board is now looking at capacity-based versus, so, so you know you have an inventory of facilities and you know you have facilities that are actually aging out. And then you know you have a capacity and you have a needs for a certain number of student population. And this is where you're going to be into a far greater, more difficult conversation. And I hope that, that you are not, you're translating this not now just on facility-based, but actually the capacity and needs. I hope that's part of your policy.
We are, and we started some of it last year with discussions of facility closures. Heard from various communities very quickly their opinion of that.
It's never, it's never going to be easy. That's, that's not my, you know, I, the public aspect of that is the most difficult decisions that you folks are being paid for to do. But I hope that in some way, you're coming up with some fundamental, or you're working on a fundamental equation on how to approach that because at some point, you know, you know what's going to hit the fan.
I thought you were done. The, yeah, and that brought up the Eagle River closure discussion, the various Eagle River centers weighed in, and it'll be replayed in the end of the discussion. But that, that is frankly, the most obvious facilities closure is putting greeting students in Eagle River and greeting Eagle River students in Chicago.
Assembly Member Gray Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I really appreciate the conversation on debt reimbursement. And Mr. Abbott may have answered my question, but I was intrigued with Ms. Plunkett's comment referring to capital projects fund balance, because in general government, you know, we don't use a term, because the money never goes away, like our operating budget. So, I would like to hear a little bit more about the capital projects fund balance.
Operational fund? I, I know it's less than 5 million, but I don't know how much less than 5 million. I think it's at four now, three, four? But I could see growing in the future and being used.
The, the Board set aside $7 million three years ago, two years ago, three years ago? Three, three, Mark's, I'm channeling our CFO over there. Three years ago to use for board-identified projects that would reduce energy use and/or improve operational efficiency. And to date, I believe the Board has allocated three or four million of that $7 million for a number of projects. LED lighting replacement has, is underway, as well as some equipment replacement in schools that will reduce either operating costs or utility costs.
Assembly Member Hall?
Yes, I want to follow back in some follow-up with Eric. Number one, I think the matrix and, and your process for your capital projects now are excellent. I'm, I'm very comfortable in supporting the bonds and when you come to us with presentations. So, I, I think you guys are just doing a great job in, in regards to that. But you touched on something, Eric, that I think's going to become a real point of contention within the State of Alaska, is the state funding of education and schools. We still don't know what the final outcome is going to be in regards to the Ketchikan decision. I mean, you know, they won in court that the state has an obligation to full-fund. And if indeed that holds up, then technically, we follow within that same thing. And we, for a long time, of course, we put what, 250, almost 300 million a year into our school district, and we've got all of the communities in the State of Alaska that don't put a nickel in and get full funding for all of their improvements or capital projects. So, I think we're going to see the day coming here. I don't think, I know, it's inevitable, that, you know, the state's going to look at additional revenue sources and they're, you know, I don't know if there's going to be an income tax or what, but, but they've got to identify revenue. So, I think there's going to become a day that is going to get very uncomfortable when we start having discussions because the state is going to have to continue to build projects in other parts of the State of Alaska. And all of a sudden, everybody wakes up and says, now, wait a minute, we're funding our own education system and we're paying the taxes that's full-funding other districts within the State of Alaska. And that one, when that comes, it, it's going to become pretty controversial, no, no question about it. So, I, I think these are all things that we all need to be thinking about. We in Anchorage are fortunate because we've got enough of a population base and we have the ability to adapt a little bit. But the problem is, what do we do when we also pick up the burden for the rest of the State of Alaska? Because we are the population center and the financial center. That decision, the final decision on Ketchikan's going to be a big deal for the legislators and how they're going to have to handle their budgets and funding for education.
It's going to take away the local process.
I'm afraid so.
Okay. Seeing no other comments, would you like to move on to the next, or the next item?
Yep.
Yes, the opportunity.
So, just wanted, just to close on that, invite you again, if you're interested in checking out any of those locations over the summer, please let me know. We'd be happy to do a tour, get you out there, see the work happening. The next thing we wanted to talk about is the recent vandal, vandalism we had at one of our elementary schools, I think you're all aware. Just after 12:30 a.m., we had one of our school playgrounds, Takku Elementary, the equipment there was set on fire. And, you know, fortunately, we had video surveillance, which again, the pro-circuit television cameras, those were, were set up by legislative grants and as well as some other funding sources. But we were able to get that footage captured, review it, shared it with APD. APD then took the initiative and put that out, released the footage. And as it was released, a parent was watching the TV and saw a familiar person on the television and contacted the authorities and let them know that that was her son who was there. And then subsequent to that, they had conversations with the kids and they identified four teens who were out there setting fire to the playground equipment. So, the point I wanted to make with this is that this was the first significant act we had this year. And we do unfortunately routinely get people destroying school property or being destructive and vandalizing things. But the collaboration that we had with our school resource officers, the connection we had with sharing information, and the response that we had from the community has been very positive in the sense that they want to know what they can do. And, you know, having the conversation about the first thing you can do is, parents, make sure you know where your kids are. And I actually had the opportunity to talk to this particular person and shared those same thoughts with her. Was grateful that she turned in her child, I guess, or reported that, but also expressed concern that, you know, it's 12:30 in the morning and you've got a teenager who's out there doing who knows what. So, she recognized that, and I think that's the message we want to continue to communicate is stay involved. If you see activity happening in the schools that looks to be destructive or concerning, notify the authorities, let us know. We also have camper host program. We've had it for almost a decade now, where we have individuals who want to camp there, put their RVs on school grounds. We allow them to use electricity and water in exchange for their presence there on the, on the site. We've had good success with those camper hosts being out there, but obviously, we've got to do a better job of working with parents and the community members to have a lot more respect for what they have and appreciation for what's there. So, the cost of the, the damage is right around $50,000. We will be seeking restitution. I told the parent that as well, said absolutely, we have an obligation to make sure that we're recouping funds that are damaged, created by the students or children, whoever they are. And we'll be just moving forward with that and hopefully get that addressed as soon as possible so that other people in the community can utilize those playgrounds. We encourage activity on our school grounds during those hours that they're open, and we want to make sure that everyone gets an opportunity to use the facilities. So, I wanted to thank once again the Police Department and the Fire Department for their work on supporting us as we went through this investigation. And we're going to continue to try, to try and do as much preventative work as possible by reaching out to our youth and telling them they need to be more responsible, reaching out to our parents and telling them they need to be monitoring their children at all times, even if it is light out. And it's one of the things, if you've seen the footage, it was out there, it looks like kids are sitting out in the middle of the day because it's so light out, but, you know, it's almost 1:00 in the morning.
I have a couple of people who want to get in. Assembly Member Steel?
I just wanted to, wanted to say it kind of validates the expenditure that was made on camera. And I don't know that we have all of the schools covered with exterior cameras or not, but certainly those with the burnable playgrounds, it, I suspect you've got, you've got coverage for most of those.
I suspect you've got, you've got coverage for most of those.
Yeah, ASD facilities, school-based facilities have cameras on the outside and your secondary schools actually have some on the inside too.
All of our buildings have CCTV now, all of our buildings. There's a few schools that are in leased space that do not, but every building, every school that operates in an ASD-owned facility has exterior CCTV cameras.
Good job, Eric.
Senator member training?
What's the phone number for the camper host program? If we can give them a call sticker now, then I have no idea.
You know, the best thing is to direct them to the website because you can, you can call over to our office, 742-4312.
4312?
4312, we give those people setup. There's a process, they go through a screening process and they look at what space is available. Many of the camper people are returners, so they come back and they like their specific location. So that drives a lot of their conversation.
Do you have any vacancies now?
We have vacancies, yeah.
Yep.
Are you moving out?
Well, I figured they would need a place to live.
You've been kicked out, Nick?
Where'd you be mauling your house?
Yeah, I am.
Sandy probably finally did.
Yeah.
Any additional questions, comments? All right. Let's, let's move on to our next item.
The last one, we wanted to provide an update on the ASD People Mover project. We will actually be having Lance join us at our June 15 meeting for a presentation to the school board. And so we thought this would be a nice time to kind of start the conversation and let you know where we are in this process. Again, I think the last time we talked, you know, highlighted that this is something that came about through conversations with assembly personnel, school board personnel, Ms. Johnston specifically, and Josh Wannemop and Cam and Dusty Easler, just trying to, trying to do something where we can collaborate more and help promote the utilization of public transportation partnerships. So I'm going to turn it over to Mike Adams.
So thanks again. I'm here with Paris Butler from the Muni's Transit Program. Lance is unable to join us today, but Paris is going to fill in and he's going to tell you a little bit about the, the program that we've run at East over the last 12 months. As the superintendent mentioned, this is a cooperative effort that was sort of conceptualized by a group of assembly and school board members a couple of years ago. And it's, it's been fantastic for East High, which has been the subject of the test that we conducted last year. So good, in fact, that we're expanding it to a couple more schools this year and Paris will tell you a little bit about that. So without any further delay, I'm just going to hand it off to Paris and then we can answer any questions you have at the end.
All right. Good morning. First off, my name is Paris Butler and I'm the paratrans eligibility assessor for Anchorage as well as a travel training coordinator for People Mover too. So I'm just going to talk to you a little bit about the East High pilot program that we've got going on here. I'm not sure how much you are familiar with the program, but essentially their student IDs are doubling as a bus pass as well. They're all encoded with the chip inside of them. And I like to pass them around so you guys can kind of see what I'm talking about. And we have them for both staff and for students as well. The staff, or the students would be horizontal like this and staff are going to be vertical with the hole punched on the top of them there and they're all encoded there. So that's kind of what they're, what we're working with at the moment.
And the, and these are, these have their pictures on them?
Yeah, yeah, they have their pictures on. I just have a blank one so you can see what the card is actually like here. But they all are doubling as their student ID as well. So the first number we throw at you guys here is the total number of trips that the East High students took last year was 41,842. So every time that an East High student would tap their ID on the fare box, it would record the trip for them and total 41,842, which is excellent, being the first year out. And I also like to throw a big thanks to Megan Haswell, the assistant principal at, at East High there. She was a lot of help. She helped coordinate the whole outreach, the whole outreach with the school and kind of get the word out there for us as well. So the next number, the, that's the average monthly ridership that we have. We average about 4,100 there, so that's pretty good as well. So we, so the main three routes that service the East High is Route 45 that goes through Mountview, which is our heaviest ridership there, Route 3 and Route 15. And the Route 15, I'll show you in just a minute, is more of a, would be more of a connection route for East High. So they connect at the Northway Mall and they'd be able to get a Route 45 that would service them to East High School. So you see is Route 45 here, so there's a, there's one main bus stop coming right down, right across the street from East High School and there's great access, just one light tap to cross to get ready to the school there. And 18,46 trips for just Route 45, so obviously that's our highest ridership for East High students. And that serves the bulk of the actual, of the zone, of the school zone for East High. And then Route 3 as well, that's another big one that serves most of northern lights there. And that, we actually will hit two bus stops right along East High as well, around the northern lights side. And for that, we have 7,700 trips throughout the school year for last year. And Route 15, like I was telling you, that's more of a connection trip for some of the students that are on the outer perimeter of the East High zone there. I believe there was, yeah, 2,900 trips for those. That's more of the students that may have to take two buses to get to or from home from East High. So everything went really well. We've had a couple of adjustments that we would need to make. So what we did last year, they took all, they attempted to take school pictures during registration, but all y'all know probably that they can do it online as well. So we only got maybe a quarter of the actual students who were registering for school coming in and taking their photos and then Live Touch would have to come for registration, leave, come back again during the first week of school and take more pictures. So an idea that we came up with was possibly just taking all the school pictures the first week of school so Live Touch doesn't have to come out multiple times to capture all the students there. You know, this would be a little bit more effective and another problem we ran into as well is that a lot of, there were a lot of cards that were being misprinted or damaged between, between Live Touch and our TT students who were helping out Live Touch there. And it'll just, there was a lot going on during registration. They couldn't really concentrate on what they're doing. So what they're going to do now, the first week of school, they're just going to take all the pictures in, they're going to take the cards back to their, back to their office and they'll print them off there and then they'll deliver them back to East High there. And they'll kind of hopefully mitigate that problem as well. And as you saw, the, the hole punch at the top of the staff ID as well, they, last year we had this little template for a hole to be punched in it and they were having to do it themselves. So we're actually going to punch and punch all the holes in the IDs before we deliver them to Live Touch so they don't have to do it because the problem they're running into was if they missed that little template at all, it would damage the card and mess up the encoding chip in the card and the card would not be able to work on the bus. So we actually have a machine that punches the holes in the card, so we'll have them pre-punched before they're delivered to the school to kind of help cut costs with having to replace all the IDs there. And as far as lost and stolen ID cards from the students, that was a note problem that Megan brought up to me here. So current, in the past, their IDs, they would charge $5 for replacement IDs there. And so they would, she was talking about possibly raising the rate that they would charge for the replacement IDs because they, she said she'd have some students who would go through seven or eight ID cards and, and that was becoming an issue and they only have to pay $5 to replace them. It wasn't a big deal, but they, up to the 15 or 20, they, they, a light bulb go off and they say, whoa, yeah, I'm going to be a little more responsible with this ID card now. I'm going to have to spend 15, 20 bucks to replace it. So that's a possible solution to that as well. So you're probably wondering, whoa, what about the lost or stolen ID cards? What happened to those? So we have something what we call Bad List. So whenever a student would have a loss or stolen ID, she would shoot us the student's name and the number that's associated with that card. And we deactivate that card and activate the new number for the replacement ID for them. So we didn't have just a bunch of random people out in the community using the East High IDs there.
Paris, do you have any questions?
Yeah.
So is this the same kind of practice that you use with the university students?
Yeah, same practice.
Is there any synergy between the two as far as how it works for the municipality side?
So for our purposes here, I mean, as far as tracking, the U-Pass, so UAA, East High School, Career College, everybody else who uses the U-Pass, they're all coded a certain way so that we can track the actual usage for each card. So is that kind of what's happening?
I just was thinking this, you know, lost and...
Lost, so yeah, if they do send us, they do generate a Bad List for us and they send us the student name and number associated with the card, then we will deactivate that card.
I mean, I would just hope because as we get more into this program, there should be a synergy and it should be efficiency of scale.
Yeah.
So that, you know, this, I mean, yeah, the lost in town, it could have been my daughter 25 years ago, she would have been lost every other day. But, you know, so I mean, that, that the same program is throughout.
Yeah, yeah, it's universal as far as how we deactivate losses, stolen ID cards.
And then the other thing as far as the Live Touch, and I'm not sure, you know, part of the picture-taking, I don't know security-wise, but, you know, you have so many options now for pictures that you could probably do it on your iPhone or you could do it, you know, that we might not need Live Touch to be doing it all the time.
Yeah, I mean, I agree, but I'll say that, that'd be something that ASD would need to talk about.
That's a school decision. But that's just... Live Touch is there anyway, making ID cards for the schools. We've just, instead of putting them on the basic plastic stupid blanks, we put them on the, the smart ones that also trigger at the People Mover fare box.
Yeah. Because actually, that's a good point you brought up.
Is that how we're all classified, stupid and smart?
Do you have a chip?
That's actually a good point you brought up because for Benny Benson, they're actually going to be doing something similar to that because they have some returning students who don't need their pictures to be retaken. So for new incoming students, he mentioned that they would just take a picture with their school camera and then they will send it. They, I believe they're still going to send it to Live Touch to have it put on the card, but they're actually going to be taking a picture themselves.
We have a couple of other questions. Ms. Plunkett?
So my question is on the, the cost for the lost and stolen cards. What is the cost of, of the card?
The our cost, the actual cost of the card?
Yeah.
Right now, we have it out to bid. We will have an answer for you by, by Monday.
So what was it last year?
Last year, it was...
So I have a relation.
It was about a dollar a card, I believe.
Yeah. It was a little more than $2.
Yeah, a little over a dollar per card for our actual cost. And we got a bulk rate for the card, so it was a little over a dollar.
So I, I guess if you're looking at potentially increasing it to $15 or $20 for a lost or stolen card, with what you said, I, I think I would want ASD to be part of that discussion because the population's...
It's the school that recommended it.
Yeah, it's the school. So it wouldn't be us charging the student $15, it was more the sub-school doing that.
The school wants to discourage people casually losing their cards.
Yeah, yeah, it wouldn't be people who were charging the students $15 or $20 for the card. No, that'd be...
Because I know it's run by the JROTC group. I mean, they're the ones that, that do it, so.
Senator member Steele?
Yeah, is, is the program cost neutral or how is it funded?
How's it funded? So right now...
We fund it. The, it is not neutral. People Mover charges, charged $30,000 for the pilot last year for East High alone. And you're going to hear us talk about expanding the program and the, the cost for next year will be $60,000.
It increases the ridership a certain way on the bus, but...
People Mover loses the revenue that these people, students and staff, would have otherwise, would have otherwise paid in the fare box or with monthly passes or things like that. They're, they're trying to recoup what they would have lost. And it's, it is, there's a lot of guesswork that has gone into this. There's not a lot of science to this yet. We hope to learn more as we, as we move forward. As you can see, 44,000 rides, that would have generated 60, 70, 80,000 dollars depending on the age of the riders. So they're, you know, on a pure basis, they've lost money, but they, these are probably a lot of rides that wouldn't have happened otherwise.
Yeah, exactly. And that's a student and staff as well. So currently for students, it's $1 per ride for their, for the reduced fare for youth for seven, or five to 17. And for adults, it'd be a $2.50 per trip. So, I mean, that 41,000, now like you said, it could be close to 70, 80,000.
50, 60,000.
Yeah, right, somewhere around there.
Mr. President, could I, just since I, this was my baby and I could maybe help Mr. Steele on why I worked on this for six or seven years?
Sure.
The, the general concept to me was, and I was, you know, told for years you couldn't do this, but we have schools that are within the city that are on bus routes and we also have a huge facility of school buses. And what I would love to see at some point is that we have the synergy of public transportation and maybe not having the cost of school buses. This is back to the shared service thought. And that's, that's where I was going all along, was always told we couldn't do it. And so I get very excited, you know, that we have a pilot program that seems to be working. But that's the overall goal, is that you could have the flexibility of, of starting high school at a different hour. You wouldn't necessarily, because the high school schedule is based on the, the school bus system.
So it's bus system, so it's bus system in terms of...
No, no, but I mean, you, you have high school at 7:30, middle high, yeah. And so it gives you a flexibility and it gives you a more robust public transportation system. So that, that's where it's going. Yes, hopefully between the two, there's a cost sharing that will, will be able to come out and be somewhat cost neutral. But there was, there was a policy to this besides.
Thanks. Mr. Peterson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I was wondering if you had any information or tracked the number of students who rode the bus over to the King Career Center?
So for the King Career Center, they do have a school bus that goes at certain times to KCC there. So they, I believe it's two, two or three times a day that they have a school bus that shows them back and forth to KCC, but if it's in between those times, we weren't able to really track that trip. We're just able to track how many times the card's actually used. So I believe a lot of students do use the school bus to take them directly to KCC and back home, you know, East High's right down the street from there. So some students during, during one month may even ride their bike or walk down there too.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Propp?
So have we saved any, that is, have we reduced any busing to this?
The short answer is no. There's been some changes in the way some kids have used the bus, but the overall bus, home-to-school, school-to-home activity for East High has not changed appreciably this year.
So this is about, I mean, it's, it averages, as they said, about 4,000 or in the peak year, a month or about 4,500 a month. Say that's 150 East student and staff a day.
Yeah, and you're, there's say 20 to 25 school days in a month.
Oh, so it's even more now, maybe 200.
It's a couple hundred a day, I think is the typical deal. And as, we, we didn't bring this information, but the, the U-Pass works throughout the whole system. It don't have to be, it doesn't work just to get on at East or to get off at East. In fact, there are hundreds of uses on the Eagle River routes by East High students and staff and the South Anchorage routes and the West Anchorage routes. So it's used, the, the 41,000 that Paris mentioned earlier is area-wide for all 10 months. And the pass works weekends, holidays, you, you know, it, it works at all times and on all routes.
So Jennifer, absolutely, as you know, a big supporter of this, I'm glad you've been pushing and we want to push on all kinds of shared services, I think. It just hasn't, it hasn't got a critical mass enough that it, that we're seeing these savings, right? We still want to do it and expand it, but if you just reduce the bus that we have by one, one rider, we still need that bus, you know? At some point, we're going to see some savings. It's not yet.
No, this is your first area pilot program and what you've done is you've established a pilot program. So now we have to condition the, the population and also, you know, at some point, the school district makes a policy decision and says, we're going to, we're going to have East High, say on some of your more popular routes, that East High students are going to be riding the public bus. They're not going to, you know, and, I mean, it's just, it's, and the question was, the federal funding, all along, as told, you know, we get the federal funding for the school bus transportation. And I don't know if this will happen while you're here, it's definitely not going to happen in my tenure, but it is, it will provide the flexibility that you don't have currently with the school bus system.
I'm a big fan of it. I guess I'm just cautioning, high school is the easiest part of our system to do it in. You don't want to do kindergarteners necessarily on the public transportation. And East is the easiest of the high schools to do it on. It's the most bus. We've picked the right one, but it's going to, we're going to face more challenges as we... We've picked the right one, but it's gonna, we're gonna face more challenges as we expand.
Ed, do you want in?
We get paid the big bucks for it.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that it has been positive and what we recognize, not only for students getting access to school at different times, we've been able to change the schedule over at East successfully because they have flexibility. So there's a delayed start and many of these kids don't have transportation to get there other than school bus or People Mover. And because there isn't a available People Mover route with flexibility in times, they can show up later and take advantage of that. So now we have professional development occurring at the school with a modified schedule in large part because of this that's going on. So those are the kind of benefits that I think may not, you know, speak to the financial thing and the growth of district-wide thing. Those partnerships like that allow for greater flexibility and those are all positive things as well as you have staff members who are now accessing People Mover where perhaps they weren't before. So it builds that advocacy for public transportation.
And it probably helps a lot of students be able to afford after-school activities that they never could do before.
And to just be able to go to after-school activities where they would have had to take a bus, a school bus, because that was their only way home. Now they can stay after-school for either activities or academic enrichment.
So we expand our supports. Our supports are before-school and they're after-school.
I think East has more than doubled their quantity of after-school activity participation because, for two things, this and food service have made the big difference.
So, Mr. Croft?
So I have Assemblymember Gray Jackson, Evans and Steele.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you, Paris, for this presentation. I know you're not done yet.
Yeah.
And Ms. Johnson, thanks for your six years of work on this project because I think it's really a wonderful and worthwhile project. And I don't mean to sound negative, but I'm only bringing up the next question because I use ride-bus a lot. And so are there any reported or significant behavioral issues?
No, we haven't, we haven't been notified of any major behavioral issues. And from what I've heard from the drivers, that there are a lot of kids that are very respectful of them, they've been doing an excellent job overall riding the bus. We haven't, nothing major actually come up during the last few weeks.
Perfect. So I guess the last riding person riding the bus was me. Thank you.
Assemblymember Abbott.
I realize you guys did a lot of guesswork trying to estimate the costs of the People Mover and all that and setting this up. Now that you have, you know, this year under your belt, and I know previously, I assume we didn't track, you know, how many of those fares were students before, so this is new data. But on, at least on the three routes that you've highlighted, has there been, I assume People Mover kind of tracks revenue on, by route also, was there any noticeable diminution in the revenue that we got on those routes during this year that we could say may have been because now students ride a free?
I don't have the numbers exactly. I've been, Christine, have you, I don't know, could you speak to that a little bit?
Frankly, Christine, can I ask anything?
Yeah.
Our ridership has declined slightly, our revenue has declined slightly over the last year, so it's hard to pinpoint if this means we pause or not. But generally speaking, our youth ridership isn't necessarily that high or high towards revenue. It's more of a adult cash fair. And so this is just a great program to still get revenue from youth ridership and also make youth ridership more accessible. But again, that's data that we're going to...
It's my understanding from talking to Lance earlier that the traffic on this Route forty-five, the Mountain View Brigade Route, has gone up. And they think that must have something to do with East High. There is no direct causal relationship that can be tracked quantitatively, but there's no reason to think that's not one of the factors.
I have Assemblymember Steele and then we'll let you finish your part.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm looking forward to that day when we have a viable public transportation system that's viable for all of us. You can run out to the corner and jump on a bus and get anywhere within a reasonable period of time. And, you know, and it may be that it works out, we can have less contractor busing or less district busing or smaller buses or whatever works out as we see this flourish. And I think it's a great pilot program and I hope that it's, I mean, successful.
All right, one more thing. Sorry, go back.
Not sure I can.
All right, so this last hour, we talked about in the last slide as far as outreach and getting the word out to the students. So last year, me and Jesse Furman, who's in the marketing department, we went to the school during the school registration, set up a table, talking to students, talking to parents about the program, how it works, when they can use it, which is during the school year only. And we felt it wasn't quite as effective because due to the online registration, we just didn't get that number of students actually coming physically to registration. So what we're going to be doing this year, we're gonna bring some information. They're gonna have, I believe, a glass case that's gonna be dedicated to People Mover information. We'll have an image of the fare box with kind of like a step one, step two, step three type thing as far as how to use your U-Pass. We'll have some bus schedules at the school for them as well so they can, she was saying it would be in the activities office, they'd like to do that as well. And she'd also mention it during their first school assemblies as well. So as far as just going there during registration to talk to them about the actual U-Pass, it wasn't nearly as effective due to the low number of students who were coming to the registration there. So as far as saying to Bartlett and Benny Benson here, we're gonna run it very similar to Bartlett. I'll be able to talk with Mr. Gallegos over at Bartlett, but I know he's getting ready to retire or is retired now and Mr. Prince is gonna be the new principal there. Not that I've got the chance to touch base with him, but from what I spoke with Mr. Gallegos about the upsides and downsides of what happened with East, he definitely agreed with doing their school pictures the first week of school and sending over to Live Touch and doing it the same way that East is gonna be doing it. So they kind of want to be on the same page as East, which I agree. So everybody's doing it the same versus Bartlett does it this way, East does it this way, Benny Benson does it this way. So if we're pretty collaborative as far as how the program's running, that'd definitely be helpful. And for Bartlett, the Route seventy-five, there's a main bus service at the school there. So there's a couple of connections for other people in the outer lines of the Bartlett School District, the one, three, fifteen, eight right there. And thirteen will also give you connections on the seventy-five to get down to Bartlett there. There's a couple, there's a bus stop right in front of the entrance to the Native Heritage Center and the Bartlett entrance and right across the street for going back. And delighted to continue comments, there's a signal they can cross there to get over to that bus stop as well on seventy-five.
Paris, I'm gonna get in one person.
I'll wait for you to stand.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, and as far as Benny Benson, so Mr. Rurie, he told me that, I guess how they do it there, if they, he does individual intake with every new student who comes in, so he interviews them individually. He said he, we gave him all the information about the U-Pass and explained to him how that's gonna work. And he's gonna talk to the parent and the student each individually upon intake with them so they kind of have a clear understanding of it as well. And they, as soon as you walk into school there, they're also gonna have a glass case that we're gonna provide them with some information for the students so they can look at and see, we'll have a systems map so they can see what buses go where in town. And they'll also have some bus schedules as well in the front office there for the students. And he also mentioned as far as putting on their automated recording for the school your first call, just throwing a little bit of information about the U-Pass, saying that students can now use their student IDs as bus apps as well. So he'll definitely help with getting the word out in that case. And for Benny Benson, we also have the Route seventy-five, the one that stops right on Airport Heights Road there. Yeah, back to Airport Heights, so you got the seventy-five...
Tudor.
Tudor, on the back of the street that...
Atchison Tudor.
Atchison Tudor, turns to Airport Heights.
Campbell.
Campbell airstrip Road, sorry. Campbell airstrip Road here. So you got seventy-five that serves it and also the bus one that services that school there. And as my thought as well, I said they can use the bus anywhere else for jobs on the weekends, they can use it throughout the day after-school activities and whatnot, just not for school hours. And that's about it. Is there any other questions about...
I have Assemblymember Johnson.
How's your app coming?
How's my app? So we got the Trip Planner and we got the Bus Tracker right now. So with Trip Planner, it's definitely a lot easier to go direct to Google. So if you have a Google Maps app there, you just bring it up and then when you type in what route that you want to take, you just hit directions and there's a little bus icon on there as well. Click the bus icon and it'll give you the directions to where you're going. You can go cross streets in, you can go business locations, exact addresses as well. So as far as using Google Maps that we've integrated with, it's really been a helpful tool. Because I also do travel training, so that's one big thing I emphasize with my travel trainees, is teaching them how to use the Trip Planner app as well because like probably ninety percent of the students in schools have a smartphone, so they can use that app as well. We'll have information regarding the Trip Planner. And the Bus Tracker, which is pretty cool as well. But you'd have to go to the media website, so we would, you can actually drag that out and create an app on your phone, but it'll actually show you where the bus is along the route when you're waiting for it. So if you're wondering if the bus is gonna be on time or whatnot, it'll show it in real time where the bus is in relation to what stop you're at as well. So that's a definitely beneficial tool for them to use.
So I have me and then Catherine Pluckett and then Peterson. I recently met with the new principal over at Bartlett, Sean Prince, and some of his counselors. And it was interesting, they were talking about that there's this large group of students, primarily Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander among students who hang out after school waiting for their rides and can be there until, you know, five o'clock, six o'clock at night, depending on when their rides, rides come. But when I was talking to the counselors, they said that when they had talked to them, most of them have never been on a bus and have no idea even how to begin to think about riding a bus. And it prompted the conversation about helping students to learn about, even beginning to think about riding a bus and how we would do that, how we would provide that kind of experience or training or that sort of thing. So they were thinking about how to do that through an assembly or through a variety of ways. But I guess my question is, is that something that we did it at all at East and it's something that we thought about as we expand this program and really helping children, students, know how to access and use the bus?
Yeah, exactly. I actually brought that up with Mr. Gallegos as far as doing, we do, I do systems trainings for groups of individuals who want to learn how to ride the bus. We mainly work with individuals with cognitive disabilities, but we'll also do it for anybody who's interested. So we have brought up the idea of doing a group systems training and teaching the students the basics of how to ride the bus. It could be just like a small class a few days a week. I'm not sure about the logistics of how they want to do that, but I'd definitely be open to me and my travel trainer as far as doing assistance training, doing a group training, and also anybody who would like to do individual travel training, actually taking them out on the bus and showing them individually, one-on-one, if they need that level of assistance regarding how to ride the bus. We could definitely do that.
Catherine?
So as a part of that, you might make sure you deal with the bike situation as well?
Yeah.
Because you could have some students wanting to do a combination of that, especially with the Bartlett route and probably the Benny Benson.
Yeah.
My question is, and I don't know if it's to you or to Mr. Abbott, I'm really glad to see that we included Benny Benson at some point. Are we gonna look at the save because it's similar?
It's similar. It doesn't have great bus service, though.
No, but their students also have jobs and could be using the combination as well.
Right. We've tried to focus on schools that have good bus service at the school at least. Even, I mean, every high school kid could use this regardless of whether they go to Chugiak or South, which have essentially zero bus service at the school. But they could use it in other parts of their life. But we focused on the kids that would benefit from this as they get to and from school. And Benson was a good candidate because there's two routes that serve the Tudor Road area and there's no, well, there's very little home-to-school bus service for, Benson is considered an alternative program. And so we do not provide regular home-to-school service like we do at East or Bartlett. So Benson has been particularly eager to get this and any transportation support they could have because so many of their kids struggle to get to and from their building.
So maybe a follow-up?
Sure.
I know that my council worked with People Mover to change one of the routes slightly for CITC.
Yeah.
And is that something that you're looking at, how we could make maybe the People Mover be more accessible for Save, which I think is a school that really does, we really do need to look at? Is that something we can maybe...
So as far as...
Looking how changing routes or how it could be worked?
Well, you correct me if I'm wrong, but as far as how we design where our routes go, it'll be based on the ridership. And if the ridership isn't quite there for Save, students are not as far as diverting a route off to go right by Save solely for the purpose of picking up the students that may not be on tap due to the ridership in that area. I mean, is that the basics of it there?
I think it's something that we could look at. We would look at the impact to the speed rider from the bus.
Yeah.
And then the demand at the school. I can say for Bartlett's service, we've adjusted our schedules and shifted some trips actually to make the trips arrive in time for the school start. So we're definitely willing to adjust schedules and look at it around with better service.
Assemblymember Peterson?
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I want to thank you for making this program effective for my constituents in East Anchorage, Bartlett and East, and Benny Benson around my district. And I do believe they're gonna get a good turnout of riders on the new route this year at Bartlett. Because there are quite a few students who live in the north end of Muldoon that actually walk to school. And it'd be more convenient for them to just walk to Muldoon, rather than jump on the bus. And it may actually be considerably safer for them too, especially once they start working on the overpass here in the north end of New York, too. There'll be a lot of construction going on there. So I really think this is a great program that's heading in the right direction.
Yeah. Assemblymember Steele?
Yeah, I was just thinking, what a great educational package to put together, similar to the science kits. And elementary school teachers could take their class on outings using the bus.
They do now?
Everybody learns.
We do, elementary, there's a lot of elementary schools using for field trips right now.
Yeah. I mean, it just seems to me that that helps educate the population in terms of the use of the buses as well.
Actually, just to tag on to that there, we, during the summer, we get a lot of summer camp programs, elementary school students who actually come down to our Downtown Transit Center. And we have an assessment center with a mock-up of like a half of a bus there where I actually show them how to use the bus, how to go over the schedule, how to board the bus, how to use the fare box, how to pull the cord, everything they need to know about riding the bus. And we also, the AFSAC program, they also come to us quite a bit for group training as well, actually coming down to the assessment center. And we'll go through all that as well as far, like I said, safety aspects of riding the bus, common stranger awareness, what to do, what you can and cannot do on the bus and going over the basics. And we cater to their age level, to their age appropriateness of what they would need to know for riding the bus.
Just like there's no additional questions or comments. Thank you so much for your presentation. All right, we're coming to the section where comments, are there comments that both would like to share? Seeing none, we have our next scheduled meeting on September. It looks like we have not nailed down a date yet, but September in two thousand and fifteen, that will be at City Hall. And then following that, December eleventh, here at ASD. And...
September one, I'm probably gonna schedule that to the eighteen, September.
Eighteen.
So we have some break sessions on Friday, so that would be...
I understand that might be hunting season. It's okay, I'll work it out.
All right, and with that, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.